Discussion and the.
Ordinance for consideration.
All right, with that, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I was gonna make a motion, but I'm not sure if this is appropriate time. I'm still looking at that RFP organizational assessment and salary survey. I've done my best to review as best I can, but I would like more time if there's a way to table it to the next work session in two weeks from now, or just checking. I would like to know more about that and read it more in depth, just for my own personal. I don't know if everybody else has gone through it.
Uh, well, if, well, let's get through this motion first. Any opposed? Discussion, I didn't see. And um, the ordinance is for consideration and then uh.
Yeah, I don't mind discussing. I just want to make sure that I. I want to read it more in depth. I don't feel like I did a very good job of that myself.
Okay, so, well, we can, why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we discuss it tonight? This is just a discussion item anyway. So we can actually put it back on as another discussion item.
Okay.
Uh, so this way we'll have two cracks at the, we'll have two cracks.
Thank you.
Work, okay? All right, and Greg, we need a motion to.
Uh, make a motion also to amend the agenda here to add a bit approval for a capital replacement of. Some cardiac monitor defibrillators as well as a resolution two thousand twenty-three oh two, the HMV grant authorization to. After the approval of minutes here.
Okay, so.
From B to C.
Right, and you should have in your possession. Uh, an agenda that amends that with the highlighted in yellow should be the way we just motioned it. So we got a motion for that. Was there a discussion on that? Oh, we didn't get this happening yet. Any second? All right, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? That's what we'll do. So that will go between um. Uh, B and C, right? Yeah, or C and D after B. I'm getting. Which is not unusual. All right. So with that, go to your highlighted agenda and uh, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the February fourteenth. Regular Board of Alderman meeting.
Motion to approve.
Go out a second. Let me discussion on those minutes. Hearing done, all in favor? At the post. Motion carries. All right, next is a bid approval for the capital replacement of the cardiac monitor defibrillators, Chris.
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, uh, this year we included eighty-five thousand dollars in the capital replacement budget. For uh, two cardiac monitors that are at end of life, they're both nine years old and. One on value external delivery is carried on command vehicle. Uh, we had three companies that we had worked with based on our medical control. Uh, we've met with all three of them. Um, one of them we threw out because they did not meet our specifications for the bin. And we ended up getting two bits directly from uh. The companies, they're all, all three companies are sole source providers as manufacturers. Two bins, one from Stryker for a total cost of one hundred, two thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars, eight cents. And one is all medical corporation for a cost of eighty-one thousand, three point four. So we are recommending the uh, purchasing of all medical units. I'm asking for. Resolution uh, for purchase not to exceed the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, because we'll be able to order um, our spare cables and circulator cabinet at the same time at the same bid price.
Okay, with that, do I have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any uh, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you. All right, item D, resolution twenty-three dash oh two, HMV grant authorization, Chief Arden.
Uh, this is an annual grant that we get from the state to do hazardous moving violation traffic enforcement um, on grant time, on overtime. And it is fully one hundred percent refunded by the state to our department. Just need for um. Approval from the board to continue with that grant. Please.
All right, do I have a motion to uh, for that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of resolution twenty-two-three dash oh two, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we are going to uh, go into our discussion. Uh, a continue our discussion about the block uh, license plate reading cameras. And uh, based upon uh, Alderman Peters uh, request, we put together a uh, a couple of. Questions that had been uh, asked by us and by citizens from the January tenth meeting. And the January the twenty-fourth meeting of what you have in your packet, which uh, the answers are highlighted in the number nine. And with that, Chief Arden, I'll turn it over to.
We're briefly with that. I was just gonna say Elliot, I fantastic. Thank you very much. This is gold standard and at least. Keith, thank you still very much for taking the time out. I did not mean to add any additional items on to this.
I wanted to diddle Keith.
We did it in kind of a team effort. We reviewed all the questions and made sure we had them down. She reviewed them again to make sure we weren't missing anything. And then we got, she got the answer down and read. We reviewed it all. So I think it's very, very accurate what we have here. If you've got a chance to look it over, I think the uh, the questions and the responses are very accurate. It works. No, it works. Okay, and with that, Lisa, I'll turn it over to you and Lisa Dunn of Flock. And uh, and you guys can take it from there and then uh, any questions that the board might have?
Um, all I basically um, have to add to anything that we've already discussed before is that this is a program that. Majority of municipalities in St. Louis area are either in or trying to get into. It has been an extremely. Strong resource for us, a tool for us to use in our investigations. We've got over thirty-five different cases just since we started using it last year. This has actually brought us. Uh, suspects in cases of car break-ins, uh, burglaries, thefts, that type of thing. So for us, it's just gonna be another tool in the toolbox. I know that I said um, Lisa Dunn's questions as well. Is there anything you want to add before we start having to ask questions, Lisa, or?
I also brought Laura Holland.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, you're fine. She's like another VP that got to be here the last time that she's here. They're here to answer questions for us as well, so uh, they're from block. They're the professionals. Me, I can't answer any of the questions because I'm not that person. So um. Do you guys have anything you want to talk about first before they go to questions or?
Um, I did see some of the questions that you said you wanted us to cover.
Yeah, that'll be great. That'll be fantastic.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, thank you guys so much for having us here, Mayor and um, Laura Ward. And so I know y'all had a lot of discussion on this and I love to see how I'm just focused on your, 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 your unique privacy and protected. Some of the questions were regarding our cybersecurity protocol and information. Profile that. That you guys can log in and see some of those important cybersecurity details uh, to learn from you. Basically that internal, um, somebody else who, you know, I presented in post that. And we'll make sure that the chief gets that information for all of the um, order requests. Um, another piece on that, um, with that thirty-day data storage, I know there was some skepticism about whether or not the data or the data was actually deleted. Um, and understand the skepticism, but also something to keep in mind, our, our business model is really based on that certain days. Data storage is very expensive. Um, and there's a lot of images that are stored. Model is based on not straight or long enough data.
One of Keith's questions I think he had in common is you can't unbelieve the completion. It's not gonna be in the cloud somewhere where you can just pull back into random time.
Thank you for clarifying that. That was a big one.
So if anyone has any other questions other than what we've already covered or what you got in the packet, please?
Yeah, I just have one question or two questions that kind of tie into the uh, thirty-day data storage. So, I mean, I understand that, you know, the thirty days, at some point, is there any way that the city can. Enter into an agreement with Flock to cement that? So it's a policy currently, so. Any point you guys could change it to sixty or you could change it to a day. Would there be any? Any way for the city to negotiate with Flock on, say, for example, a car that just comes through that doesn't have any hits, it's. Clean plate, takes a picture, nothing happens. Is there any way that we could, as a city, have a policy that that would drop off, say, within. Twenty-four hours, three days versus the thirty, and then only keep the ones that hit with some type of, or is it, they all have to be thirty?
Yeah, so uh, I think, I, I don't know how much you guys have um, talked about this specific piece during the discussion, but there's really those two ways. And that investigative portion, nobody else. Right, so being able to look back in time and see where that individual went, um, what, where they might be. So they use and maybe find a plate or um, find the aspect to go and ask additional questions. That investigated it, so it's digital for a law enforcement, because that probably created a thirty-day standard.
That was gonna be my response. The whole purpose of having is to be able to go back and see where that car's been. So we can possibly find out where we might be able to locate them or going forward where they've been since they. Prime in our city.
Okay, so I answered that. My other question was, and I think it was answered within the original set of questions, and I just want to be clear on this. So when my car comes through and it hits my license plate and say it, true report stolen. When it gets sent to the local police agency, it'll just say red F-one-fifty, this license plate is reported stolen. Will have the information of whose car, so it's literally just this car reported stolen, go investigate it.
And Laura, before you answer that, our lights are a little room, so if you don't mind standing up, coming up here, I appreciate it. Thanks for having some issues with the audio.
Sorry about that. Yeah, there's probably, yeah, she, you want to take that?
Back up to the.
I'm sorry, I gotta stop you guys. I can't, the, the audio is gone completely. It's like cutting in and out, staticky, but it, it just totally went out.
Test, 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 one, two, test, test. I'm gonna unplug. Give, give me a second, guys. Sorry. Test, 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 test. Give us a thumbs up, Elisa. All right.
Okay, so um, I lost my train of thought. Where was I? I'm sorry, it's been a very long day.
Going to a different system.
Yeah, we have to go into the Regis system, which is law enforcement only, so blocking, no one, you, you guys couldn't come in and get into that system. And run the plate and find out what the actual. Hit is on that plate. So we have to confirm that. We don't just stop somebody based on that. We have to confirm that in our computer system before that happens.
You already thought we use Regis for other.
Yes.
Thank you, I just wanted to.
We have that for decades. Yes. We've had Regis for decades. That's one that's connected to Department of Revenue, so we can run a license plate. Or to criminal histories or to other states' histories, that type of thing. It's, it's very, very highly secure. For any of you who ever had to come to the police department to do a background check. If you go into our offices, you can't be around our computers because they have access to Regis. And so if you come through, we have to have. Sign-ins and everything else to know who was through the building. That's what that's for.
Very good.
Anybody else have any other question?
I, I do. Mine is more contractual. I want to stipulate that if, to move forward, if we did. That there could be no modifications to the contractual agreement that, let's say, Joe's driving down the street and his pads are expired. I want to make it, we're, I want to make sure that we understand that we're strictly using it for stolen cars or. Kids being, I don't know.
It doesn't do it.
Yeah, that's uh, great. We, we actually have our connected to the Missouri Department of Revenue for insurance for some, so you.
I'm just asking because technology is a wonderful thing and it's constantly growing and I'm trying to. Think further out because I know the first one I had was flip phone and we're a little further along now. So I'm just saying, as this progresses or grows and expands, technology does as well. I want to make sure that we're not just going after anything that moves, that it's held for a specific reason such as building cars or other.
Investigations.
Investigation, certainly.
Yeah, anything with, no, no, anything with, anything with expired plates, like she said, they have no access to Regis or DOR, any of that. They're just taking a picture of a license plate, so it's not going to tell us any of that information. It's just gonna say.
I just want to make sure that you.
Right.
That I would not like to see.
Investigated, so they can't have access to that, so.
I love it.
Question, would you like that to be a modification to the notification section of the contract?
If there's a way to put something in there, stipulating that, that any advancements in that, I mean, again, I can, I can.
Just one step uh, ahead, we were actually successful in negotiating, if you look at section two point twelve, we negotiated additional provision that to extent. Block changes any of the representations or provisions in the agreement, that we can terminate the agreement within thirty days.
And I do remember reading that, but I didn't put it all, there's a few pages here, but. Thank you for.
Wait, that, that's our safe word. Very good, thank you.
So, put your question on, more on the how the system operates. I know it was briefly touched on with. Always takes picture of the back of the car, right? What if, is, is the train the word for the license plate or is it going for the whole frame of the back of the car? For example, I'm thinking larger vehicles like commercial trucks, they don't always have a license plate on the back of it. So they might have a trailer on the back of it, so they only have one plate on larger vehicles. How would it operate in a situation like that? Is it still getting the back tailgate of a truck? On there or, you know, like it's a U-Haul truck that doesn't have a plate on the back? How does that work with the system?
Yeah, that's a great question. So um, this system basically takes. Uh, operates to take this series of pictures as the vehicle passes because it's motion activated. And then there's an internal algorithm that decides which is the best picture of the license plate in back of the car. And that one is sent to the cloud. All the others, nobody ever sees them. Um, so it, it typically is the full rear vehicle image and that gives your. Additional investigative data, some additional information to confirm the validity of the hit. Um, we do see in, you'll, you'll also can pick up those, even if they're not a plate, it's still U-Haul that they can um, use in additional. Investigative searches. Um, we also have actually helped a lot of customers with stolen trailers, so that's very common.
In fact, the um, burglary that we had down here at Philmart where they. Uh, broke in the door and pulled out the ATM machine. We were actually able to see that truck. Video camera from inside the store showed the side and the back of the truck. And we were able to see that same damage and plot cameras from St. Louis City and some other areas around here, so we've been able to identify that.
So that was just give, give a picture at least.
And you said presently per street grade were around thirty-five, thirty-six, at least.
Easily.
Okay, because I, and that was a concern that a constituent brought to me that is very important to them. They just wanted to make sure that we were randomly. Uh, they used another municipality as an example, and I want to be fair to the thought process, but I knew that our number were higher than that already, so. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, they are, our guys are really good with actively working with the system since we've had access to it, especially at Penzi Point. And I don't know if you guys are aware, but we were at test, we talked deer birds into getting that system put up there. And so we were the first one deer birds, now it's in all of the deer birds in the St. Louis area. Um, so because they liked how it worked so much in it, we had so much uh, luck with it ourselves at the police department. So now we've gotten. We now have access to all the other deer birds footage or pictures because we were able to get ours up. So it, I don't think they've been up a year yet. So just the success that we've had with that is, to me, it's gonna be a tremendous tool for us, the way we're gonna set this up.
So timeframe, so say we were to bring like this within the week. What's the turnaround time to get them installed? And then on the, the city side with internal policy. Would we be able to get a policy put in place and everything so that when, I guess, they are turned on, you know?
Our policy, the police department, we have a policy for everything. I know I'm afraid worried about policy. We have a policy for how to drive our car. So, or seriously, how to fill out our time sheets. We have a hundred and forty-four general orders. And this is gonna be no different. Our policy is already made up for that.
Oh, you already have it.
And it's based on some of the policies we received from Flock as well as some area, area. Uh, departments that are using it as well as the International Police Chiefs Association. So we're using best practices on that. Um, and. There will be training for every one of our officers before they're able to use it. They have to have training on that and there will be um. Limited access or restricted access to who didn't actually didn't. So, yeah, we're already, we already try to stay above or ahead of the game with the policy. We're used to having a policy for all of it.
On install timeline, I'll give a little recap and then for additional questions, we'll refer to Lisa, um, because she's the territory manager here, but uh. Typically, it depends on the permitting process. I think some of these locations are on county right away, and so we'll have to work with the county's permitting process and that can. Sometimes take a couple of months to finish, uh, but hopefully that would be up and operating on some.
Thank you.
And I will definitely keep you updated on, on that as well. But yeah, Lisa, I love the fact that, and all the locations we wanted to put them, I think there's only one that was on a city-owned pole. Unfortunately. And you're welcome. Um, so. They're already working on permits and stuff. They've been working with other cities with county and them, so they know what they, what hoops they need to jump through between now and then. I think we've got a state poll as well that we discussed the last meeting, so um. We're ready to hit the ground running as soon as we have the, the green light.
Any other question? Lisa, anybody? All right. If not, we will go ahead and move on from this discussion and we'll go to item app here. Citizens. Elliot, are there any citizens in person that would like to come forward for you?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do believe we have residents in person who would like to address the board at this time. Uh, why don't we start closest to the door and we'll work around this way. Uh, Barbara, Presley. Come on up and uh. Say your name, name and address.
Uh, Presley Barber, five-one-one, Freeville. Uh, and I'm referencing a item that was in uh, direct usage. February thirteenth, um, regarding a worker compensation risk assessment. Uh, it states that a risk assessment was performed by a safety consultant from the uh, workers compensation provider. And all the member department has for city buildings, reviewed safety manuals and asked question. I was just wondering if. One, the results of that risk assessment will be made available for, and two, possibly to. Possibly to be bothered in the nation.
I will just include it in my monthly report. So first meeting in March.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in person want to address the board at this time? Uh, I would uh, remind everybody joining us on Zoom that uh, this is the here citizens. Portion of the meeting. Um, I'm going through my chats now, but if you could click the raise hand button on your device. Give me some other indication that you would like to address the board at this time. Uh, this will be the only here citizen portion of this meeting. We have one more here. Oh, come on, come on up and introduce.
Uh, Nathan Barrett, seventy-seven, I have a chair. Um, it's pretty much regarding the wall to St. Michael's. And right now the condition is it's invested, it's spikes, the dead men are failing and it needs to be replaced, so. That's pretty much all we're looking at right now.
That will be a topic.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Um, Mr. Mayor, we do not have anybody uh, on Zoom who would like to address the board at the time. We do have a lot of people who have joined us on Zoom. You can see all those, but nobody's giving me an indication they would like to speak this time, so I think we're ready to move on.
Okay, thank you, Elliot. Let's move on to item G, ordinances for consideration. Uh, we uh, in a motion for second reading of bill three oh seven six, block group service agreement authorization. We did the first reading on two fourteen twenty-three. Do I have a motion for second reading?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All right, the hearing done. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Second reading, bill number three zero seven six, by title only, ordinance authorized the mayor to execute services agreement with Flock Group.
Okay, now I need a motion for final passage.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Discussion. Hearing done, we need a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, please answer aye or nay on the following roll call vote for bill three zero seven six, Alvin Louder. Alderman Peters. Alderman Odenwald. Alperson Reeves.
Nay.
Alderman Smalley. Uh, person Welch. Hi, Mr. Mayor, that is majority in favor and bill three zero seven becomes ordinance three zero five seven.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for all this discussion and uh, this in-depth discussion before we approve this, so that's good. All right, let's move on to bill three oh seven seven. This also is conjunct with block, the St. Louis County Rights of Way Agreement Authorization. We did a first reading on two fourteen twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion for second reading.
So moved.
Do I, okay, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Second reading of bill number three zero seven seven, by title only, ordinance authorized the mayor to execute. Missouri rebuilding replacement of automatic license plate motion cameras within the rate of way maintained by St. Louis County.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for final passage.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing done, Elliot, roll call.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, please answer aye or nay on the following roll call vote for bill three zero seven seven, Alderman Louder. Alderman Peters.
Aye.
Alderman Odenwald.
Aye.
Alperson Reeves.
Nay.
Alderman Smalley. Alperson Welch.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor, that is majority in favor and ordinance three, excuse me, bill three zero seven seven becomes ordinance three zero five eight.
Okay, let's move on to bill number three oh seven eight, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget amendment. Diana, I'll let you take that.
Did an overview at the last meeting regarding. Budget amendment. Exhibit A looks at each of the funds. And the requested amendment. And exhibit B looks at the detail. That describes each line item that will be affected. Are there any questions from the board regarding this amendment request?
Uh, before we, before we go into the uh, first, uh, first reading, uh. You would like to get this passed tonight as that director, I would need a motion to suspend the rules and do the first, second and final passage this evening. Have a second. Any discussion?
I, why do we need to, my, I guess my question is, why do we need to get it passed for second and third tonight?
Diana, I'll let you take that.
I am requesting it because. Missouri State statute requires. Missouri state statute requires that a budget be in place to make any expenditure. And we focused only on the major funds of the city and the sewer lateral fund was not included. So I would like to. Comply with state statute before we make any expenditures from the sewer lateral fund.
Thank you.
Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, and now I will need a motion for first reading of Bill number three oh seven eight.
As as the sponsor, I will make that motion.
All right, do I have a second? Discussion. None, all in favor? Any, any opposed?
First reading of Bill number three zero seven eight by title only ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget of the city of Shrewsbury, Missouri appropriating from the revenue and reserves of the city funds. Therefore, providing for adjustments.
Okay, very good. And now I need a motion for second reading. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Second reading of Bill number three zero seven eight. Ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget of the city of Shrewsbury, Missouri appropriating from the revenue and reserves of the city funds. Therefore, and providing for.
All right, Betty, I'll entertain a motion for final passage.
I'm making a motion for final passage of Bill three oh seven eight.
All right, do I have a second? Any discussion? Elliot, we need a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, please answer I or nay on the following. I'm in Smelsley. Mayor, that is all in favor and Bill three zero seven eight comes to three zero five nine.
Very good. All right. Thank you all. And let's move on to item H. Uh, our discussion on the Shrewsbury Municipal Court update led by Mr. Mike Pauli. So, everybody, Mike, welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come in and talk. First, we're starting with any questions about courts?
Can you just give a little overview of what you do?
Yes.
Maybe, thank you.
That's a good.
So, um, we start with how a ticket becomes a court case. A ticket is issued by the officer either resummons or not by information. Is transferred over from the police department over to the prosecuting attorney's office where the prosecutor can either accept, take it under advisement. Or just completely decline the the citation. If they accept it, it becomes a court case at that point in time. Once becomes a court case, uh, the individual has a choice of either paying it outside of court on most of the cases, not all of the cases. Uh, appear in court always or hire an attorney. That's the basis of the citation. My job is to maintain court record top priority. Take payments. Make sure that the process is correct all the way through. Make sure that we document. Everything about citation, make sure it's correct all the way through. Uh, make sure that. The court records are accessible by the public. That's pretty much what we do in a nutshell. It's a lot more complicated, a lot more paperwork come back in. A lot more paperwork, but uh, that's the overview of it.
Can you tell them, Mike, what your certifications are, your qualifications?
So I'm certified court administrator CCA. I'm also going through a salary that I'm seeing at MCMI class, which is a two year class. That will be a highest higher certification. It's actually federal level certification instead of the state level certification. Be. I'm also part of the, I got appointed, you don't just sign up for it, but uh, I also got appointed to the Missouri municipal. Education committee out of Jeff City. Both that education committee and the MCMI. It it's not something you sign up. You have to get appointed to it. Or referred by somebody that's either been through the class or a judge I will. And then you have to do an essay and then you're picked from the essay from that point. Like the MCMI, they do thirty people per two years. And that covers everybody from Supreme Court all the way down to the municipal court and everything unusual. So it's a pretty good honor to be part of that. It also keeps us. In tune with what's going on, the changes, make sure we're completely compliant a hundred percent all the way down.
Congratulations on that. Thank you. What's your, what's your major difficulty right now in the courts?
In general, trying to get the public to come. But it's, it's an ongoing battle. All courts are having it. It's, it's uh, mentality of people now is just it'll go away. So that that is the biggest challenge and it's, your hands are tied with what you can do. And you have to follow the guidelines. That's the biggest challenge. We've also. Eliminated, we were originally in a Regis IMDS system. Uh, we've moved all the cases from IMDS to a work out of one system. So it's easier. For everybody, probably the best, everybody is involved. It also reduces the amount by like two hundred and forty dollars a month. It's also. And then you also can stop taking credit card and other payments at the window. I borrowed a laptop from the PD that was out of service. Uh, we made a access point for that. For them to. Get on case net, which all of our records are on case net. Uh, they can pay it through case net. So there's no fees incurred by the city or the transaction. The three percent is gone. It also gives them access to public information. I've got a case net leaning on it. So somebody doesn't have internet access to their case for somebody else's case access down there. Found out during one of these classes, MCMI class that these terminals are available are available in circuit level above. And not the most valid. So took it upon myself to use what we, what we have to make her make accessible for us.
And just so you know, it's not one of the laptop. It's one of our old car laptop computers, top folks. So that's what he and he's. Got it all secured in there. I mean, he did. He came up on, came in and said, do you have? And so. He was able to get all that set up to save us all those fees and which is. And no money invested at all, so.
He also does flooring, electric.
Yes, he does carpeting.
Carpet, yeah.
Yes, he does.
He stayed after, after work. We didn't know about it. Came the next day. I'm like, oh, I remember I have doing this yesterday. He stayed after work and did a bunch of stuff. It's like, ah.
Paint and carpet that you see in the courtroom? That's Mike.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I have a question. We get, um, each month we get a, um, like a summary of what the courts. Um, have done and I, I think Elliot is passing it along, but um, you know. Is there anything that you would want us to keep an eye out for? Or is there any information that you would say, you know? Take a look at, or is it just all? Look at all of it. Or have you even seen before?
So the report I sent up to City Hall is like what's mandated by the state to send out. So the first one is your data report. It's just how much cases are resolved and for how many cases are issued in the court. Uh, and the second one's all financial. Is there anything in particular on there? No, uh, because everything has a different separate meeting. You can tell by the case loads from month to month, you can tell how many cases are being issued. The, the warrants go up month to month. That shows you that there's activity moving on the case one way or another that we don't want to issue warrants, but. It's unfortunately a side effect. And then that's for the show me course system. The uh, other report I'm seeing that you're getting also is from IMDS. That is going to go away because there is no cases.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I just was talking about how technology is constantly changing, constantly like super innovative and and I mean, is there any other areas? And you may not come, things should not come to mind. I am kind of putting you on the spot here, but is there any additional things that you foresee that? Maybe we modify. You just mentioned something's going to be going away right there. We won't have anything going through that course as many ones. Is there anything else coming down the pipeline? You can mention or maybe change. The only thing that that we're doing. It's a technology is with the new system, uh, we don't need to keep a physical copy of it. So it's, it's not a huge savings, but we'll have shredding costs every year that actually will completely go. Uh, because we'll be able to keep on top of it on more of a monthly basis instead of a yearly basis. Technology wise, there's really the, the terminal that I put in there. I am pushing because I didn't realize that the circuit level had those and they're meant, they're put in by the state and main maintained by the state. Me being on the education committee now, I am, I've got years of Oscar, um, the state court. To try to push it to the immunity level so that we're. Not only us, but everybody will have the same kind of kiosks supported by the state, which is a task in itself because they do not. Other than that, uh, showing courses always involved in. Evolving, uh, so at this point in time, no, we, we have scanners already. So that is a crucial thing we've had for a while. We've had that quite a while. So really there's nothing foreseen coming up. It's been huge savings or cost. I like that you're driving it down to municipal level though. Uh, that's a really big deal for those of us that are out here trying to do as we can in the year that you guys are trying to be more efficient. And it's not just the higher levels. They get it down into the trenches as they say. I appreciate you.
Any other questions? Mike, other areas you need to cover or would like to cover?
No, it's a night. One thing that, uh, if anybody gets bored on Tuesday nights, you can come down and send through the board bank or send through our.
No, I, I love this. Wait, can you walk us through if we wanted to come, how, what would we do? We, we park in the parking lot and then where do we go?
Uh, into the main office or the, the PD entrance.
And then you just, you just sit? Do you have to check in? What do you do?
Oh, because it's an open court. All courts are open to the public. So e- even if you don't have a case, it doesn't matter. Um, you can come right in, sit, watch the whole thing. There is no sign in, so nobody knows you're there. Uh, the only, the only people that sign in have cases there so we can pull their files.
How long do they last?
They vary depending on the load and if we have trials. So the second night of the month is trials, ordinances, housing cases. Those usually go a little longer when we have trials. So, and we've been having quite a few trials here lately. So roughly from six thirty when the judge hits the bench to. About eight fifteen to eight thirty on those. The traffic nights are generally here lately, not as long. They run to about eight roughly.
And then I'm going to ask a loaded question. Do you offer, because I know the answer. Uh, do you offer weddings at your courthouse? Yeah.
We've actually done that the past. It's. Vegas style. It's interesting because we have to keep that record permanently. That is one record we actually have to keep permanently. So, yes, we. Did you dress as Elvis or not?
The judge.
And if you haven't been to courts, I've actually gone down. I have a lot of friends who are attorneys and I had an opportunity to watch like the history of court. It was a really fascinating process. And it's, it's something I'm still love. So I'm sure that getting a ticket.
It's interesting.
But it was, it was fascinating.
And my just for the, for the citizens clarification, court nights are when?
Second and third Tuesdays every month. Doors open five thirty, court starts at six thirty. Uh, the judge is on the bench at six thirty. So if you have a patient, show up right at six.
We aren't doing Zoom anymore.
We are not.
Or is there any chance of bringing that back out or?
It won't be soon. It'll be.
Cisco.
Yes. The, uh, at this point in time, we're not planning on bringing it back out. There, there, I have issues with it and I'm trying to resolve them with state. We need a documentation back from individuals to, uh, like a plea of guilty form to that. Would show that they actually pled guilty to a case, no matter if it's minor or major. We had a problem getting those back and we, I've been communicating with the state. They won't budge yet. Is to do, uh, D signing, which I mean, you can buy a house that way. So I don't understand why a whole record can't be done, but. The state will not budge on that yet. It's a big cost to the state too.
You're in a position now to also get on that.
And also too, we're asking Mike to come in every quarter to make a report to us. And it will be at a work session because as he just explained, court is on the second and third Tuesdays of the month, which can, the second conflicts. With our board meetings, so he will be quarterly here at our work session.
And my email works, goes to my phone. So if you've got any questions.
Very good. Fair enough. Anything else you'd like to share tonight? All right. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Let us move on to item. Item I, I've got two different agendas. Item I, uh, the RFP for the organizational assessment salary survey. So we'll have this discussion tonight. And we'll carry it forward if need be. All right, uh, to another meeting. So Elliot, I will let you. Have at this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Alderman, you can pack its, uh, is a three page memo. Um, outlining the responses that we got to bids or to the RFP, excuse me. Uh, that was approved by the board last month and was posted. Um, on our website and, uh, sent out to various trade organizations and then directly to the list of vendors that would present the board. Uh, last month, as you can see, we received three. Uh, responses, but actually it should have only been two. Bolton withdrew their individual. Uh, bid because they did that on accident. They, um, are working with Matrix Consulting Group. Um, and so the bid that Matrix sent to us included Bolton as a, uh, a. Joint bid. Um, so Matrix would be the binary on that project. Um, doing the organizational assessment aspect of it. And then Bolton moved to the salary survey. Um, and just as a rundown, I'll go through these, uh, Matrix Consulting Group in concert with Bolton. Uh, provided a thirty two thousand one hundred dollar, uh, proposal for the organizational ass- assessment aspect of the. The project and a seventeen thousand four hundred dollar, uh, proposal for the salary survey aspect of the proposal for a total of forty nine thousand five hundred. Dollars. Gov HR USA was the other bid that was not withdrawn, of course. Um, they presented a twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar bid for the organizational assessment aspect of the project and. Six thousand three hundred dollars for the salary survey portion of the project, uh, with a total of nineteen thousand fifty dollars. But with a not to exceed amount of twenty one thousand five hundred and fifty for the total project. So as you can see. The two bids are quite a ways apart. Um, you know, the one's less than half of the other. Uh, Matrix certainly is very close to the total that the board, um, authorized for this project, which may be a coincidence. Maybe somebody doing their homework and looking at our minutes. Um, and our, our budget, which you would expect a good spender to do. Um, but all things being equal, one is half, less than half the price of the other one and promise to provide. Uh, deliverables that are. Deliverables that are presumably comparable, I did do as much. Background and research as I could into these two companies, they're both very reputable, they've both got good references. I was able to speak to representatives of cities that they've recently worked with and both came with unreserved positive recommendations. I will say that I believe it was Teresa Smalling of Dunedine, Florida. Said that. Matrix did have some delays with their project, she she associated that with some turnover that they had in the the team working on theirs. But that being said, both of them have a very similar timetable. Which would, if we keep up on them, as as I discussed with the mayor when we were going through these, we keep up on them, we should be able to get this done barring any extenuating circumstances by July. If we get going on it soon. Really, this is a a matter of price point, right, I I think both companies would be able to do a good job. I did state in there that Matrix. Was presented in a. I provided the full bids that were were sent in, Matrix had a larger proposal that was more detailed than Gov HR USA. And. Did. One of the recommendations that was provided, they were really good at getting digging down into the department head level and working with department heads on. The specifics of their their services they provide. Whereas Gov HR was a little more general, and I will say that in analyzing these companies, Matrix and Bolton. They just do this, like this is their bread and butter as far as what kind of consultant work they do, whereas Gov HR does a lot of stuff. But I'm more familiar with them as a kind of a headhunter company, they do a lot of placements. So really, this is a a good opportunity for you guys to discuss, you know. If you had an opportunity to go through the biz, if you have any questions about them, if you want to make a selection night, it sounds like there's a some some more. Research that wants to be done by at least one Alderman, but if anybody else feels like they have some specific questions, they would like me to reach out to these companies to to get, I'd be happy to do so.
I have a question to stay on track, why will we have to choose?
Pretty quickly, I mean, if we want to get a salary schedule in place by July. I would like to have the ordinance authorizing a contract at the next meeting, so that we can get going on it. That would even be a pretty tight timeline, so that would give us enough time to get contracts, negotiate terms and. Then get the preliminary. Research done where they would come and meet with all department heads and start doing their their interviews.
And that's doing a a separate version secondary over to over to the grid, the timeline you just gave us.
Well. Right, so you know, if you really want to get going on it, then the board would want to expedite that process by doing both readings and a final passage at the next meeting. You know, I don't know how hard a timeline that July first date was to the board, it sounded like it was at the time, but you know, all all things. Are open to reassessment, this is something you want to take your time, but being a very important topic and you know, could potentially be. You know, a big reworking of the way we do things here, I can see the ask, the idea to take your time with it, certainly.
So if we did this, if we put it on as a discussion item for next meeting with at least first reading. And then if not suspending the rules and going to the whole jibangs, then we can do it by the work session at the end of March.
The the thing I would need is is a choice between the two to be able to do that. Otherwise, we can't get a first reading of a contract that we, the board hasn't selected.
I guess first things first.
That's what I was going to say, so I actually was just more curious about the process itself. I know that we posted on our website, I think I remember creating reading is that it was on our city website, am I correct on that?
Yes, it posted in. Yes, it was sent to East West Gateway and Municipal League, not the Missouri Municipal League, the St. Louis Area Municipal League.
Here we do the Missouri Municipal League.
We did do the Missouri. Yep, we did that one, and then there was a list of. Five or seven vendors that it was sent directly to that do this, this work.
And I always come from the old school days, pre-bid process, it always sticks in my head, I understand this scenario.
Yeah.
The way it happened.
We were excited to open free until we realized, you know, it's really tough.
But I would be curious if there was. If there would be a way to get a third one just for maybe contacting other municipalities around here that have used one, just to say, hey, we should be interested in admitting the process and. Leave it, if the numbers don't work out, they don't work out because it's closed, in process, I understand that, so.
Yeah. One company that was pointed out to me ahead of time was Raftellus and they they just didn't didn't submit one. I did did as much research as I had time to do, getting a list of vendors to send this out to.
So to be extended for another, to be extended for another bid, would you, the other ones, have the opportunity to redo?
I would, I would think so, yeah.
And I'm not trying to create more work right by the party, I just have a very decisive decision. Out of my, we should take this very seriously, I have no problem with this process. But even the reference points from Florida, Wisconsin, Illinois, is there any Missouri reference site, I know they've done work, sorry, but I would like. Hear from Missouri locations, not from Raymond or the other areas, but if there are anything closer within our. I don't want to say rocks distance, but close enough around us.
Matrix is the only one that has done St. Louis area work. They did Clayton and DePere and O'Fallon, but those were on Raymore, Missouri, on the other side of the state, but. From the the bids that were sent in, those were department level, they haven't done organizational. Size assessments here in the St. Louis area.
I just asked if there's a way to reach out to Glendale and Maryland Heights that I had recommended before, because they weren't done one in two thousand twenty one as well salary and I think the other the areas, just as another, hey, would you use? And they may be able to reference somebody else, just as a good opportunity to get somewhere they're at.
Yeah, the salary survey certainly municipalities in the St. Louis area have done pretty extensively, it seems like everybody's got one that they've done in the last ten years or so, but the organizational assessment, when I sent this around to the municipalities and city administrators, everybody was kind of interested in how this would work and. And what history is very with big and what it would look like and.
So yeah, I was very looking impressed with me to pay.
Yeah, everybody's interested in in, I've already sent these these results to a couple municipalities that had asked for them, so.
And then Missouri, Missouri Municipal League also publishes an annual salary survey of the entire state.
So we've got the options of next meeting, we can either just put the put this on as a discussion item and first reading or a discussion item and first second. Passage, final passage for the next meeting.
Man, I would prefer to be a discussion in first and then. That way, all in all, it would be four weeks to to have the final go out and. You know, I want it done right because my gut feeling is is that they're going to come in and. It's going to be a. A cut proposal. I highly doubt they come in and and just, so I just agree to do it and it's going to be, it needs to be done with. With some due diligence, and I just think if we give it another, I mean, it's only two weeks to wait to to give it. To full, get another discussion, a vote, and then the following meeting, go ahead and have a second final. Those are my two thoughts.
Yeah, and I don't disagree, just as long as everybody understands that whatever we do, if we delay it a few weeks, it's going to delay it on the back end.
No, absolutely not.
So if we get down to like the last light person, just say we're not ready and say, hey, you thought you're, you know.
That'll give some better interpretation when salaries come in, or not, I'm sorry, the profit, you numbers. Maybe that would merge together with, we'd be looking at both type thing, okay, this is.
And I think that's great, as long as we all understand that it could delay things on the back.
And again, if I can do the third one, like I'm, that's just, I've always liked that, I love the reason. Sorry.
Why didn't they say if you if you go for a third, when you have to open the bid process back up?
That's fair enough.
Can I throw something out? Sorry, I I the everything's kind of breaking up a little bit, but I just want to say like, the two bids, I think are really good, like from a, just. Taking a look at them, I think that they are, they're not bad bids, at the very least, and I I echo what Alderman Odenwald said with. I think that it is important that we do our due diligence and that we do make a good decision because it could be something that really is. It it could be cuts, like, we don't know, it's a, it is possibly a reorganization, however, I think that in, if we do turn it into a discussion for the next, for the next meeting. Then we can talk about it more there, but I think that they are very different proposals, I think the one is a working with two consulting companies, but we are looking at a bigger organization. And but they are delivering more, but it is from a different, like a California company, but then we are looking at more of a local company, right, a St. Louis that knows the region. And knows when they do a salary study, they do know the municipalities around here, so it is worth taking a look and seeing, do we want something more, someone bigger who may know bigger municipalities? Or somebody more local who may understand the region, so I think it's worth keeping in mind, and I do think it is worth bringing it up for discussion at the next meeting.
Okay, and with that being said, is anybody, is everybody in agreement that next meeting, we'll put it on as a discussion item and a first reading?
Again, I I don't know how we're going to do a first reading of something that I I haven't had a draft on or negotiate a contract or anything. That's what that first reading is, it's a contract.
My concern is if we put it for a discussion item, that we're going to have the same discussion two weeks from now. That we just are, we don't move forward on it.
Well, again, with a hundred and sixty pages, I don't feel comfortable that I did read the second one, the first one, I felt I went through fairly well, but. I'm not going to make a choice, you know, I haven't done my due diligence or read the packet, so that's how I feel.
So Mike, you had kind of.
Yeah, so the option would either be to pick one of the vendors tonight and do the first reading or just table it for discussion on the next meeting.
Okay, well, I, okay, so with that being said, I think that consensus of the board is not to rush this. And we want to make the right decision, we don't want a thirty thousand dollar savings influence our decision on what's the best company to pick. So so be it whatever it might delay in terms of the backend, we'll just put it on as a discussion again for the next meeting. Does anybody have any objections to that?
It just backs it up on the back end, so I I I was reading it, it's going to be about sixteen weeks from the process.
Well, that's what they say, we would push them as much as we can to ensure we get it, you know, and maybe we could still. You know, the way I look at it is they're going to give themselves plenty of time, they may not need it all. So.
You know, deliver your furniture, I'm going to get you the furthest day out.
Right, you're going to, you're going to under promise and over deliver is what you're going to do, so we're going to, we will try that, so. If that's the case, is everybody good, we're just putting it on as a discussion item for the next meeting?
Yeah, I would just say, is is the board as a whole coming with? What you would want to see moving forward with either company A or B?
Right.
And then also to second that is going with A or B, and if you want to do both the. Assessment bid and salary bid, survey bid, or one or the other, or both, just so that we can. We can have it out, then after next week, it's moving forward with a clear direction of what.
And I echo that, by next meeting's discussion, we have to have direction.
Can I make a comment just at the discussion point? Sure, thanks. I did take a look at it and I did read through it as closely as I could, and I think that the very first one, which was the the matrix one, was very detailed, as well as the second one for Gov HR. It just seemed to me that number one, the expense was pretty high on the on the matrix. Government HR was more of a regional company, I know they did work in going on and. And what I particularly liked, I did like their references, but I did like their. The resumes of the people were all master's degree in public administration, I think they all knew what they were doing, they might be a little bit more flexible with that timeframe. I think being a smaller, more regional company, and it does save us thirty thousand dollars as far as the amount of money, and I think it gets us where we really need to go. And as we're going to hear near the end of the meeting, we're going to need to come up with about twenty five to thirty thousand dollars in another area. And we don't have the money, so.
Okay, okay.
I, can I add something, you know, barring or in addition to additional automatic review of these, is there anything else you want staff to do between now and then? On this? Is there anything you'd like me to reach out to the companies to get additional clarifications on? Is there anything you'd like me to, I've I've noted that I'll give a couple of calls to some of these cities here and say.
Could we send it to you in email format if we, if I find something, because majors, I, I, you're right, I did it very detailed, and I was trying to get to the cub, but I couldn't. And I'd like to read that one more up, and maybe if I have a question, would you mind if I sent an email that you could bring it up at that discussion point, would that be okay?
Absolutely, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're good to go, discussion item, next meeting, and we will make our decisions at that next meeting, so we can move forward. Alrighty. Thank you, and let's move on to item J, which is the city solid waste contract, Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, in your packets, you have our current contract for solid waste services, collection services with waste management. As noted in my memo for tonight, our contract was a three year contract executed in August twenty twenty. Within an optional fourth year. So we do need to either exercise that optional fourth year by August of this year or rebid and and see what we get. This is definitely the time to do this, if if not a little late already. We need to give any vendors, if we're going to bid this out, lots of time to pull this together in discussions with industry representatives. The more time we give them, the better the bids, the more accurate the bids, and the potentially the bigger the savings for our residents. So that being said, twenty five dollars a month will be the the rate if we go with our optional fourth year and. Looking at other municipalities that does seem to be about the high end of it, it's not, they're not a large. Swing here between what municipalities favor the service, it is pretty close. But it is potentially going to be on the high end, and if we negotiated a new contract, we could potentially see some different rates, but. We could see much higher rates as well, that's the other side of this, if we open it up, we could see. Kind of, we could catch unfortunately the change in the industry, everybody's having difficulty hiring people, everything's more expensive. It is a an interesting time to be going at the bid for a service like this. But, you know, if it's something that the the board does feel strongly about going out for, then we need to get going on it. I will say as far as residential feedback about our current service. I do get calls very frequently about missed pickups and other issues with waste management, but that is pretty standard with a, you know, a city our size. You know, a candidate's missed every once in a while, and it's not always the the fault of waste management, sometimes it's cars parked on a street that won't let the the trucks get through or. Low power lines or snow. One big. Consistent feedback issue with waste management's communication. While everybody is able to create an account where they can get text messages and emails and everything else from the company. Not everybody wants to, and it's that that other. Portion of our population that it's not. Gone that route that really wants some other form of notification. Now, our population is probably going to want a. Similar contract to what we have now as far as services that are provided, you know, single stream recycling. You know, single stream recycling, uh, at least once a week trash pickup. Citizen, uh, senior citizen discounts, um, the option to have rear yard pickup. These are all the things that, you know, Shrewsbury has kind of come to go and expect. And uh, you know, we probably want to put those in our bid request if we we do moving forward unless the board as a whole or a majority. Doesn't like one of those services and wants to leave it out. That's kind of where we're going to head is trying to get something very similar to the current level of service. At a reasonable rate, so.
I like keep in mind too, we want to make sure that we keep in that uh forty or thirty yard dumpster that shows up for the ball leaves.
Yes, the city does, the the city also gets some uh, you know, utilizes this service as well. It's a good point to make, and we would want to make sure that we kept that in our contract as well.
That's very.
Uh, with any any.
And just as a question for the record, and I don't see how it would. But if we go out for bid, does that jeopardize our fourth year option in any way?
Nope.
If I remember last last time we we did this, we were able. To negotiate directly with waste management on an extension. Is that still possible? Because remember last time we were able to. And because the contractor's coming up and we were able to negotiate directly with them without going out for bid?
Try to negotiate that optional fourth year down?
I'm just saying at the end to start over a year one with new contract versus doing an option.
Oh, yeah, so certainly we could try to do that um as well. Uh, I believe in.
Because I just remember that, I just recall, I think that's what we did last time.
That is a good point. We could just, the board could just decide, well, hey, let's just negotiate a new contract with waste management, and that is an option.
You know, I'm working with um with our hauler now. I mean, we've had a good relationship with them. Anything we call on or whatever, they address it immediately. The only one thing, if we could do something later down the road, their trucks are just getting bigger and bigger. And our streets are not getting any bigger, and it's, I mean, and they're killing.
But the cars parked on the side of the street are getting bigger.
Yeah, I mean, and people aren't parking real good anymore, and everybody's in a driveway here just about Shrewsbury, ninety five percent, ninety eight percent of the. Homes have a driveway, but for some reason, one car in a eighty foot long drive. But you can't make them park in the driveway, but their trucks are just getting bigger and bigger, and it's it's literally beating the streets up. You know, so if we could get a, just get to a little bit smaller, smaller vehicle.
Right, and the the only drawback to that is it could be more expensive because they got to make more took more runs in and out of the city.
A lot of certain places have this, and certain of the streets that we are having those issues. Can we do, for example, on certain days, do a a trash route where on the. Every Tuesday from this time to this time, you can't park out on on one side of the street in order to get those in to alleviate. Some issues like that, but it doesn't matter what company it is, if they can't get the truck through. All it's just the same result revolving issue of my, I know Brunswick, that's the the dead inside has quite a bit of issues from time to time. And lots of times it is, you know, someone's parked out too far and whatnot, so. So that might be something we have to look at regardless of the company we go with.
I know for being a part of this in the budget meetings way back. And you you and I were sitting in it, in fact, we finally looked and said, what did they say at the bids? And they said, we have to go out for this, and I said. What do I always say? We need three bids. I said, when you go out and get three bids? So they did that. That's kind of helps set a foundational point where we identify this is before both of your times, I think, of coming in, but. It's something that was a point of discussion, and I remember the track company prior, which I want to mention. Some of their efficiencies weren't there. I mean, they were missing them. I know they weren't missing them. I think that they've done a solid job. I think it would be. Move us to see if there's another area of opportunity for another three-year contract or just see, just see whether there is. And uh, we can, I don't know. And when you all leave, I'll. And on what Johnny said too, I mean, that's great. I mean, I've got that rather particular filter, but the um. That'd be a big expense to the city because you'd have to put those signs up on both sides of the street in every block. And then the big thing would be so much is the people don't want that sign.
Um, and then, of course, if we do change, uh, you know, that's that is going to be a big impact on one of the. One of the biggest aspects of local government, right? They say, don't don't mess with the trash. Um, one of the first things I learned in municipal. Uh, municipal training, so that is something to keep in mind if we switch. Uh, it's going to be flipping over one of the, you know, most consistent things that we provide. You know, we don't provide it as a service, but we contract that out, and most of the people still think we pick up the trash. Um, we're responsible for it, so keep that in mind as well. So, uh, how would we like to proceed with this?
Yeah, I'm thinking about how we're going to do this.
I would like what Keith said there, that can we negotiate, but also let's go out for bid? And is that.
Can we do that simultaneously?
Suggested point of order, this contract will automatically renew at the end of May. So why not go up for a bid, get bids from everyone, including waste management by May first? So then the board can decide whether or not he wants to exercise that option by the end of May.
Good, there we go. Fantastic, thank you. Okay, am I good with that? Okay, that's the decision. All right, any other discussion on that? All right, let's move on to the retaining wall replacement, let's say on Saint Michael Avenue. Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, members of the board in your packet, actually in my memo. Um, I wrote up a a little summary of a uh, it's arisen only for me anyway. It's it seems like it's been an issue that's been around for a lot longer. Uh, but I just found out about this um recently, and it's the railroad tie retaining wall. Along Saint Michael Avenue between Murdock and Devonshire, this is the west side of the street, and I did include. A picture in my memo of that retaining wall. It's not a great photo, but you can tell it's um got some issues. It certainly got some overgrowth and some collapsed uh railroad ties. So uh, this was brought to actually the city's, the the staff's attention by some aldermen who had received uh emails from. And and contact from a resident, actually residents here in person, I believe, this evening. Um, saying, hey, my this retaining wall in my backyard is falling down, and uh I heard that the city put it in. And what's the deal with that? Well, you know, digging into it, of course, it's a little more complex than that, but we did confirm to the best of our knowledge. That the city did put this thing in in the nineties. Um, we believe it was contracted and uh in nineteen ninety four. Um, and installed, there's an ordinance we have on file.
For one second.
I'm I'm Beth Ricky. I live in seven seven, it's in my backyard.
Sure.
And the city put it in nineteen seventy three.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to do.
Going through my records and and I didn't live there at the time, so I only have my uh what's here at my fingertips at City Hall. Um, it was contracted out to be replaced in nineteen ninety four. We have an ordinance that the board authorized to do so. Um. Tony was here at the time, and he also said, well, I think it's older than that, but to to the best of my ability, I've been able to identify that. A retaining wall was put up there in nineteen ninety four, or at least the board authorized it in nineteen ninety four. Um, and then, you know, here we are, two thousand twenty three, and it's still not fixed. So going back um in the minutes and the the ordinance is, it does look like the board in uh two thousand eighteen. Uh, decided to replace this and even budgeted for it. I believe it was uh budgeted in the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Twenty nineteen and twenty twenty budgets, but yeah, it wasn't done. So um. The decision of the board here is to replace the wall, don't replace the wall. And if we're going to replace it, how we want to handle that process. Uh, my recommendation would be, if we're going to replace this thing, um, and Tony's looked at this, that we do it right. We do it in a way that it's not going to have to get replaced again, which would be switching from um railroad ties to uh uh concrete blocks. First of all, blocks.
It costs the lumber right now is about as much as a blocks are too, so.
And and I didn't know that, but that's uh, that's certainly something to keep in in mind, that even if we do like for like and do railroad ties, it's probably going to cost the same. Um, so replacing it with something that's going to last a lot longer, um, and it will. Serve a a purpose, a a public safety's purpose, right? We don't want this, these people's backyards going into the right of way. And uh certainly, it's already uh blocked some of the sidewalk to where people could presumably. Have to navigate into an active roadway to get down that street, which isn't good, and it it's not holding up the people's backyard like it should. So my recommendation would be that we do replace this thing. It was already budgeted and just not done. It seems like uh it's going to cost us a little bit more now as all things, um, the longer you wait, the more expensive they become. And now we do have a proposal um that lists the project somewhere around the twenty two to twenty five thousand dollar range. Uh, we would go out and get additional bids to verify that. Hopefully, we would get three. Uh, but that's kind of the the initial range that we'd be looking at as far as not to exceed number to uh replace this. Now, if we're going to replace this. I also found um another ordinance that was passed in the nineties. Uh, for another retaining wall whereby the city replaced it or the city built the thing. And then deeded it over to the property owner so that future maintenance costs were not on the city to um to bear. And I would recommend we. Potentially negotiate something with the homeowners to where that's what we would do is this this wall would no longer be. In the city's right of way, it would be just outside of and definitively on the property lines of these property owners. And be deeded over to them for future maintenance um in uh perpetuity. So that's something we have done in the past for another project. It was a long time ago. We have a lot of research to do to verify that this is still a process that's acceptable to us, but. It uh is certainly something that's been identified as the city um had taken responsibility for in the past and has not done something about it. So if we're going to go forward, I would recommend we we uh do so with that proviso to. In good faith, try to work something out to where this wouldn't be the city's responsibility going forward. And then, as as Tony mentioned, um, you know, the wall would be warranted by whatever company put it in, so you know, uh, maintenance. Associated with that for a little while anyway, wouldn't be the.
You'd end up with a year warranty, whatever, but I mean, if the blocks fail within, I'm sure there's something there too. And again, if you look at Walmart or whatever, you know, there's got to be some kind of longevity to those blocks, or they'd have never built that wall on the back of Walmart like that.
Well, those railroad.
Same type of block.
Those railroad ties lasted how long? Fifty years?
No, we replaced those ties. Well, we replaced them numerous.
But even if that, let's say it lasts thirty years, you know, uh, landscape. It's safe to say we might be joining them, yeah. So uh, it's it should, it should last a long time. But save the city a future commitment uh at that point, and yet satisfied.
So uh, if if uh the board's um, uh, if it uh is acceptable to the board, I would like a vote to approve uh to authorize an RFP to get this project done.
Any discussion before taking such a vote?
I would say it's it's going to be an amendment to the budget again, financial one, since it's not being budgeted. Correct. I I would, my my consensus is, and I understand the safety portion of it by that, but it doesn't seem to be a a major emergency that we're going to have to do it. Within the next couple of months or so. But if there's any way to prop it up until we can budget for it for next year, that would be my.
We can't hear, we can't hear public comment during this session. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Don't don't mean to cut you off.
There's parts of it, Mike, that there's not much there to pop up. And there are like any kind of purring or whatever that we can do, it goes straight to the.
The yard's going to be in the street.
The other issue on that street is there's no sidewalk on the other side, so you couldn't even shut it down to where you force people to go around it. And law school kids come through there. My thing would say is the first step, let's see where the numbers fall. And then at that point, you know, look at it and because also, I mean, as it's been noted several times, we've passed the buck on this. So unfortunately, I think it's at a point where we're going to have to address it.
Well, again, I did put this in my budget back in seventeen, eighteen, whatever, but then we pulled out of the budget. Because I think that's where the problem was. They didn't know how to address it with the property owners. And then that's where it got left. Well, now beyond that, now we have to do.
So with all this being said, let's go out and our bids. And then we'll come back to the, when we get those bids together, we'll put it on that following agenda for further discussion. And make our decisions at that time. Is that fair enough with everybody? Okay, that's what we'll do then. Elliot, that gives you enough direction?
Yeah.
He just had a, he just had a procedural question. All right, uh, so that's it. We're good on that. Tony, you're next with the Public Works Budget Update Discussion there.
Okay. Um, with the overwhelming budget meetings and stuff and the papers that we blew through, uh, through the, we didn't blast, but we went through them. Um, when we took out the street work, we took out a hundred thousand dollars worth of a chip seal because we have a um. A utility that's going to be, we're doing their repairs. And then with the concrete and the problems with the speaker and stuff, we took money out. I did leave twenty five thousand dollars in there. For any kind of repairs and stuff that we may need. Um. I did get a call from Diana and it was on a weekend or whatever, and she asked me about that twenty five thousand. Does it come or does it stay or go? And I made a mistake and said it goes. So when we got the final budget in, I'm looking for my funds for street repairs. Well, needless to say, it's not there. And I'm asking to put that in funds back in. Because we need some repairs.
The entire twenty five thousand?
We don't have to do the whole twenty five thousand. We can do something twenty, or I just need something to work with.
Discussion? So we're just discussing this tonight, so.
What what number are you looking at that you need to work with roughly eighteen, twenty, somewhere in there? Um, if you give me somewhere between fifteen and twenty, um, we're good. And anything. If if we can do fifteen thousand, that'd be great, because anything more than what that's going to be would be an emergency.
I, here's my concern, is that we just went through the entire budget process. We just went over all this, and now we're back two months later, so. You know, what keeps us from? You know, what keeps any other department head from coming back and being like, no? You know what? I I went through the budget, we cut everything, and now, you know what? I need this. Or, you know, I need this. And, you know, this as a board, it's so tough. Our last budget session was so tough. And it is something that eh to to come back after the fact. We know that you need money for street repairs. It was terrible to do that whole thing. And to come back afterwards is very, very tough um to to come back and and to have to reapprove it. So, you know, I echo when Mike Schmelzle is no budget amendment. You know, I I applaud him for doing that because we're still waiting for that money to come in. So I say, you know, wait till May, and when the money starts coming in, then maybe. But, you know, we approved the budget for a reason, and to come in now is is tough. I like, I'm a no, so.
Well, another thing I would say too is that, you know, we're going through this uh municipal municipality study. And I know the bids are off by about thirty thousand dollars, and if we were to take the lesser bid, which personally, I think it's a good bid. Uh, for for what we get out of it, then we have thirty thousand dollars left over that we had budgeted that we're not going to use, and which we need to use for that and the retaining.
So Tony, let me ask you a question. Since that is kind of at a state of flux, right? How we haven't made a decision yet on which one we're going to take? If for some reason, some expenditure. If for some reason some expenditure, street expenditure came up that it was an emergency expenditure, you would come back to the board. Considering you don't have it in the budget right now.
For an emergency?
Yeah, you would come back to the board.
Yeah, because that would be probably one of the concrete streets if something major happened. But as long as I've got the, you know, we got fifteen thousand dollars worth with for our asphalt repairs and stuff like that, we're, I mean.
So you have no problem waiting until we see what we're doing, what, what we're doing here with the.
Actually, we started street repairs, right? I mean, I got some money and another, but there's only like five thousand dollars there, and the repairs we made today probably ate up. Fifteen hundred of that. As I, when I put it down to that thirty below zero or whatever, and that top of that ground. That moisture that was at the top there, just took them patches and popped them right out of the ground. You know, it's, we, we gotta put it back.
I agree with. Alderman Schmelsley, that I think that we have a chance and we will know here in the next couple of weeks if we're gonna be going one way or the other towards this company. If we do go through the lesser one, we now have funds to support immediately. What, what, uh, Tony needs to get, get the job done and then we can take the overflow and apply towards the wall process. It's if you're getting to.
So your, your thought is to continue discussion until we see what we've got on the other end.
He's gonna need the, he's gonna need it one way or the other. I'm just.
Yeah, we need it. I mean, like I said, we're basically starting already today. And I wanna get it done before June, July gets here with a hundred degrees.
I'm, I'm in, I'm in complete support. Can you give us a couple of weeks? Would that be fair enough?
Yeah, I have a plenty in another budget that I can prop that to us.
Just for a couple of weeks, so we can get to the next point and then we're. We should be good, just so we can all look at it a little more.
Next year.
For twenty twenty-three.
Yes. Well, I better. We're still at the beginning of March.
I just did it. I'd be snow by the end.
I'm not worried. We're gonna, we're gonna be.
Don't say that.
We're gonna be seventy degrees, whatever. I mean, we have only used twenty-five tons of salt this year.
If I have to shovel snow on Friday, I'm coming to your house.
So will you have surplus?
Yes.
What was budgeted for salt?
And we're gonna have actually surplus. Or from the streets. Cause we have that twenty-four thousand. Some odd dollars in there, and that machine is up and running. So we.
Is it turning left and right?
Yeah, it stops.
Tell them what you told me to.
What, I think it runs a bit steers better now than it did when it was new. Now, it, we have went through a pretty good test today with sweeping up this debris that we've been grinding over here, so it, it's great. So we still have some hydraulic leaks in the cylinders, which I think those are just literally wearing out. You know, that we'll just have to get new cylinders, and each one of those are like three thousand dollars, but we can make, we can lift that through. You know, till whatever, but so between salt, the sweeper. And whatever, we, we can. Rob. I hate that word. I hate saying that, but that's what we're gonna be doing.
Unused finances, we can actually switch over.
We'll call it sound money, Peter's bluff.
But I don't wanna stop our street.
But you gotta have to keep this for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll, we'll be fine.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks. All right. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, let's move on to item M, which is strategic planning session, Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Alderman, again, in your, in your packet, there's, uh, this will be a pretty short discussion. Really, I'm just looking for, um. Would the board be interested in scheduling strategic planning sessions with a consultant? Um, I believe it's been, it's been addressed a couple of times as a possibility. Um, I did reach out to somebody that had, uh, presented at a recent event that I attended and, uh, just. Out of the blue, asked him for, uh, a recent proposal that he'd given to another, um, municipality. It was. I don't know if everybody else thinks so, but, uh, six, sixty-five hundred bucks seemed a lot more reasonable than I was anticipating for, um. A project like this. So, you know, now knowing that it's potential to, uh, if we could potentially. Um, for, uh, a lower cost than I think everybody was originally thinking. Is this something the board would like to do? I mean, it's, uh, uh, over the course of several weeks, we would have, um, special meetings where a consultant would come in and do a. Uh, series of meetings where the board and department heads would all be invited and there would even be a, a, a section where the public could come in and give. Um, you know, a, uh, uh, strategic planning session of where, where we think the, uh, important. Um, you know, the most important aspects of the services we provide and, and how to do those going forward and. We get a, a report at the end, just, uh, kinda gauging the board's interest in something like this. I, I know. There's, there's been some discussion on it, so.
Thoughts?
I think it's somewhere in fashion to the RFP organizational assessment slash salary survey. Maybe I'm incorrect on that, but. I like the idea. I actually champion this probably more than you ever, but, um. Cause this really makes us take it down and take a look at, look. Definitely get better, right?
Right.
But are we paying somebody to do that in the RFP?
You know, just.
This is an, this would be an internal process based and as opposed to.
Right, this is what I recommended during the budget process as we go into twenty twenty-four, which I know. We don't wanna think about this, twenty twenty-four budget will be upon us, um, soon and, um. Having a strategic plan. I think it's very important for the city. To go through this process, um, as we. Go into. Budget talks and having, um, a five-year plan.
And that's probably my player picture, five-year plan, something I gotta think about. I'm not against it. I just tried to figure out how it all works.
Well, and you look at it this way, we can, depending on what bid we pick, if we pick the, the cheaper bid on, on the other. For under thirty thousand dollars, you get, you get organization and you get salary and you get a strategic plan.
I think I'm gonna be gone by then, but I think it's so vital that the board get together. And do planning. Like, I think it's the one thing that has been missing. We haven't done it since I've been here. I don't know if, if Keith, you and Greg ever, did you guys ever do strategic planning?
No, we have not. Be very useful as well.
It's such a great idea that i- it's just so important that we share ideas outside of. This meeting. And I just, whether or not this is the right bid or not, I don't know, but I think that you guys need to do it. It's a great idea.
Think you're right.
I think we're looking to it a few weeks after we, kinda, we, Tony's situation, we had the. Um, RFP kinda figured out and then. Would that be enough time to get something like this before the, like, go through the process, before budget talks really start up again?
I, I would think that wouldn't be a problem at all. Okay, any other discussion on that? Any old business coming from the board? Hearing none, any new business come before the board?
I'd like to just, you're talking about walls. And I don't know if I brought this up in a department head meeting or the board meeting, but. If the city could contact Saint Louis County about the block wall that's on northbound the Lake Station Road between Archbishop May and here ours. That wall's falling apart. I stopped the other day because there was a gentleman in a wheelchair from Georgetown coming north on the sidewalk. And it was nothing but blocks there, so I was throwing them up into the woods. So that he was gonna be able to get by, otherwise.
Send Craig, we could send Craig over there.
Yeah, it is, it's falling apart. It's just disintegrated. You can see where the water's coming through and disintegrating blocks.
They're gonna have to do what they did on the south.
Yeah. Across from Georgetown, yeah. Just something we might wanna get them on sooner rather than later. I'm pretty sure that's county property. That's not Shrewsbury, correct? Or it might be. Just as a, uh, precaution, because I don't wanna see somebody have to get out in that street on a wheelchair to get around it.
Yeah.
All right, and as voted here, citizens, uh, was moved to, uh, the, towards the front of the meeting, so, uh, we do not have that. And, uh, with nothing else on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Alderman, before you leave, will you mind?